March 17, 2011 Committee Meeting Finance and Administration. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
I declare a quorum and before the minutes, the question for Mr. Mermis, house cleaning thing. Would you rather do public works first or is this the order, your preferred order tonight?
Public works first.
I got a question. What?
So that should go fast, public works.
Right, so I'm just asking his.
It's up to the minute.
Okay.
Who wants me to get to it?
No, I'm okay. What?
Are you talking, discuss public works within the budget or, because there's no public works committee tonight.
Public Works Committee.
This is an old one.
Oh, that's old. That's going finance.
Right, are we okay? Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's just finance.
You scared me. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Can you read me, what's the next item that you wanted to go through? The budget itself and the overview or the minutes dated, what date is on that?
February 24.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve minutes dated Feb. 24. Is there a second?
I move.
On the question, anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I've got a question.
Yes.
I've got the minutes from, oh, good boy.
Thank you.
It's probably an older packet, right?
No, they gave us another set of minutes.
I'll make a stop. It's all right.
Okay. You okay then?
I'm okay.
Okay, so those minutes did pass dated Feb. 24. The next item is report recommendation on the fiscal year 2012 budget. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Wilson to take us through the overview.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple of minutes ago, Mr. Fashoda passed out the slides for the PowerPoint that we're going to go through here. Just a couple of big picture items, what's new in this budget from last year's budget. The IT and engineering departments were both eliminated as actual cost centers. The IT function was brought completely in-house and the engineering was taken out of house, was outsourced. Both of those are now reflected in line items within the administration budget. So when we get to the administration budget, you'll see a pretty sizable spike in that particular department. However, that's predicated solely on the consolidation of those two departments into that one department. From a personnel standpoint, it's a little fun to explain, but the net reduction of full-time employees in this proposed budget is two and the net reduction of part-time employees is four. And we will get to those as we're going through the budget, but that's the high-level review on personnel for this particular budget. Also, as you saw in the past, a number of weeks ago, we are proposing a re-allocation of the utility tax, 25% of it from the capital projects fund to the general fund. This is a structural change within the general fund to get there.
Uh, from Alderman Shaki?
Of course.
If I may, that utility tax, that was a referendum, wasn't it?
The non-home rule sales tax was the referendum.
Oh, the non-home rule.
Couple from, that wanted to affect July 2007.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Actually, it was a referendum, but it was like 20 years ago. And at the time, it was passed by the residents, the council at that time said it would be dedicated for capital projects. But things change over time, but it was referendum about 20 years ago that it went into effect.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
So if it was for capital, capital, why is there 25% in general?
They're proposing to do that in this year's budget. Mr. Wilson?
Could you do that?
It's my understanding that it's not by law earmarked for only capital projects. Mr. Wilson?
Correct, yeah, it's not statutorily restricted to capital projects. If that was something that was pledged on camera 20 years ago, then, okay. The flip side of that, though, is then you're going to have to find $300,000 presumably of bodies in the general fund to make it balance. So if you want to go ahead and eliminate five more positions, we can do that or you can move, you can move the money.
I'm not saying that one bit, but.
Well, I mean, that's effectively the offset you're going to be talking about if you don't go with, if you choose to go a different direction with that.
Okay.
If you can continue.
Okay, sure. There are a couple of new revenue line items in the budget. In the police department, the tracks guard, currently the cap in the box is a still photo. They are in the process of working with the vendor to upgrade that to an actual video of the crossing violation. And then that will be brought in-house and adjudicated in-house like they do currently with the toes, the administrative towing. The upside of that is that the county and the other agencies aren't going to have their hands as in the pot as it is when it goes to the field courts. So it's going to be extra money coming into the municipality by doing it in-house. The FTA booking and the e-ticketing, we actually just talked with the chief on those on Tuesday. Those are very new, hot off the press revenues. We only have one month worth of history on those, though, so we don't really know how much money they're going to generate. We're just conservatively saying maybe 1,000 to 2,000 apiece on those, but we are going to put them in the, in the book just to show them going forward. The FTA booking is a fee that the city will get for failure to appear warrants that are issued when people fail to appear in courts. And if they're arrested in Wooddale, we get a $70 fee for processing those people. The e-ticketing, I think the legislation calls an e-citation. It's a fee that goes to help pay for the maintenance and upgrades of the electronic booking system that we use at the city to process people when we arrest and book them through. Another change, and we've done these in the past, but the international snowplow truck that was approved to be purchased a month, month and a half ago, I want to say, on state bid, we're looking to do a capital lease for that out of the motor fuel tax fund. We have done that in the past with a number of vehicles. So this isn't something new, it's just, that's not typically how we've bought the snowplows, so we just want to go through that process.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
If you want to wait to then, I could wait to then. But the only thing is, why are we, why are we even considering leasing trucks for a lease agreement on any of our vehicles?
Mr. Wilson?
Well, capital lease in government finance world is a fancy way of saying effectively a car note. So it's not a lease, we still, when the vehicle's purchased and the lease is let, it's titled in our name, so it's no different than if any of us just went to a dealership and bought a car and we just pay the note. At the end of the term, we get it back. We hold title the entire time, we get the title sent to us when the payments are done and we move on. Unfortunately, MFT fund will let us lease a vehicle, but they won't let us just outright buy a vehicle. And the funding source typically for these is the general fund. And again, one of the things to do to help free up some flexibility in the general fund and to get it to balance was to move the funding for this particular vehicle to a lease out of the MFT fund.
What?
And we've done it in the past with the Vector, a couple of the F-350s that we've had, and the aerial lift truck, were all purchased on capital leases in the past.
Well, I'll save my other questions through the budget.
Okay, Alderman Coles?
Could I, could I, you weren't here when we started, you weren't here when we started to lease the equipment.
I am.
And that's the reason why we got the equipment that we have today, is if we didn't, we couldn't afford to buy all the equipment, so we leased them out for five years. If I remember right, it was a five-year lease, and after five years, the truck was paid for and it belonged to us. And it was the best thing we ever did because this is how we got our eight, nine, or 10 trucks, the internationals. If we, we would have never been able to buy them otherwise than, if we didn't have the leasing outfit. So that was done by, a long time ago. You don't, you don't, you probably remember when they used to plow with a three-quarter ton pickup truck, that's all they had to do a whole city. But after they built the industrial park, they couldn't take care of all the streets, so they had to get something bigger. So then we started leasing them, and it's the best thing we ever did. So I, I think it's, leasing is good for our city. We've done, we've done real good on leasing the equipment.
Okay, next bullet.
In going through a review of the general fund, again, to help the structural issues within the general fund, it was realized that the personnel in the stormwater maintenance division were all operating out of the 269 location on Irving Park, which is the wastewater facility. So they were operating out of there, using the vehicles out of there, using most of the resources out of there, and yet their salaries, for some reason, were being taken out of the general fund. So what we did was we went ahead and moved that entire division to the water and sewer fund, and so now all the employees in seven, at 720 are out of the general fund and all the employees at 269 are out of the water and sewer fund. So there's a clean division between the fund and the location. And like I said, just based upon where the personnel was coming out of, it just made sense. There was some history to it, why it made sense years ago to have it done that way, but looking at the current lineage of it and talking with Mr. Kramer, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to do it that way anymore.
So we're not talking about billing here or anything? We're just talking about funds for payroll?
Correct, predominantly, yes. The general fund that was sent to you a day short of three weeks ago showed a modest surplus of a little over $12,000 in it, and that was with the re-allocation of the utility tax, the moving of the vehicle to a capital lease, moving of the stormwater maintenance, some other revenue modifications and a number of other minor tweaks. We started this process out at right about a million dollars upside down. So to go from just shy of a million to 12,000 to the good, it took a lot of work on our part and we had to put our thinking caps on to, to get there. And unfortunately, part of the problem was some of the revenues last year were perhaps overstated in the budget from what staff truly felt comfortable with, but were put in anyways, and so we had to fix that and then go through and temper those numbers with, with the reality of everything else. So in the budget, there's, what, 19 pages on major revenues, beginning on page 45, where we go through the major revenue types and break those down, there's a number of charts, things of that nature. Major expenditures start on page 64, and then the change in fund balance or net assets is on page 80. Currently, the city has 13 funds that we budget for. In this year's budget, six had an increase in fund balance or net assets, seven had a decrease. Of those seven, six were planned and are all related to capital spending, be it through the CIP, in some engineering costs, things of that nature. The fund that is down, that's not related to capital per se, is the narcotics forfeiture fund, and it's down $900, just increased costs to take care of the dog. So there's no, no real concern with that one, that's a special revenue fund, the money can only be used to take care of the dog, so no real concern there. I would like to go through this, is to go through, just start at the, you know, the first half, the third tab, actually, the general fund summary, go through the revenues, high-level review of the general fund, and then go through, and as we get to them, discuss and approve or deny the expanded level items. There's either seven or eight in this year's budget. And then we'd like to get a consensus for each department or each fund before we move on. That way, once, you know, we vet a department out, we talk about it, we agree it's okay and we move on. In the past, occasionally, it bounced around quite a bit, and we want to stay, you know, as linear as we can going through the entire document for continuity's sake. After that, either tonight or next Thursday, when the entire book gets your blessing, we have to publish a notice in the newspaper for a public inspection period of 15 days. And then after that public inspection period's up, we have a public hearing at a council meeting, presumably the second one in April. And then we have passed the ordinance for the budget. At the same time, we'd also like to pass the fiscal year 2012 MFT resolutions so that we stay on par with those now that we're caught up in the middle years. And then working under the presumption that the capital lease idea gets approved, we'll also pass the necessary resolution to enter into the capital lease agreement for the purchase of the international truck.
Okay, so with that, I see that we would start, which fund would you want to start with? I think now is appropriate to just go fund by fund systematically, correct? Is that what you'd like to do?
Correct.
Okay, and then what fund would, I'll recognize Alderman Police, what fund would you like to start with?
Just start at the front edge, the general fund, which is page 81. That's the third tab, it's called general fund summary.
Okay, Alderman Police?
Brad, we had this discussion already. On, on this budget here, you guys said they have a $12,000 surplus. That's including a water rate increase of seven and a half percent, correct?
The water rate increase, that's a completely different fund, has nothing to do with the general fund surplus.
Right, but if we don't have that water rate increase, there's going to be about $500,000 that we have to make up somewhere?
Water fund.
Just in the water fund?
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the $12,000.
Okay.
In the, in the general fund.
So we're going to, Alderman Police, we're going to go through the general fund first and then the water fund and then look at, okay. Did I, did I see any other questions? Okay. Okay, so with that and the general fund, is there any questions, comments? Should I make a motion to approve? Okay. Okay, well then, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the general fund, and I do have a second. And a question?
Are you going through it?
Anything on the question? I'll give it a few minutes, just so everyone can find their place.
In the general fund, my question is, business license. Do you really think, what are the common being?
What page are you on?
Page 82.
Okay.
Is that where we at? Started with the?
Sure.
Okay, 82, the business license. Is that a, we'll check, number of 85,000? Is that the business license we have now or is that what businesses that left, some businesses that left, some big gun businesses, like household and, or is it just the business license?
Mr. Wilson?
I'll finish that in a roundabout way, but I will get there. If you look at the third, the second column in, you'll see the fiscal year 10 actual was just a few dollars under $93,000. And then in the red column, you'll see this year's projected to be $85,000. That, that drop there is largely predicated on the loss of Michael Lewis and HSBC in the, in the business licenses. There's a few other smaller companies that, that have left and then some other smaller ones that have come in. So at this point, kind of in talking with the building department and looking through the files, not knowing off the top of our heads if anybody else is already stated that they're going to be leaving, we did look to hold that number constant from what this year's receipts are. And speaking with the building department, there are possibly some businesses coming into town that might bump that up a little bit, but again, there might also be a couple that leave. So at this time, we're kind of in, I hate to say treading water mode with that particular number, but we are holding a constant from what the receipts were from this particular renewal cycle in November and December.
May I, yes?
Yes, please.
Let's, let's go in the, in the government fire, fire prevention. Why is there an increase in that? Are we giving them more work? Or are we?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, that's actually the rate that was set forth in the contract that was agreed upon two years ago between the city and the fire protection district for the, that's their, what they pay us to reimburse us for the dispatching services.
Oh, so that, that's dispatching?
Correct, yes.
But that may, that may change, though.
It's, anything is.
A monkey wrench in this.
Yeah, but as of right now, I know there was that discussion about a month ago on that particular topic, but I know they canceled the meeting and then haven't brought it back up yet, and we have yet to hear anything more definitive on it. So at this time, we have no choice but to assume that it's going to continue moving forward.
What do you think we should? Do we think we should count that in for sure in this budget, knowing that it might not happen? I mean, I'm a little hesitating on that one.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I might have to defer to the chief on, on this one or to Deputy Chief Festa as to the ramifications of the dispatch center if they were to pull out, because it might, there might be an offset there, I'm not sure, but I'll let the deputy chief speak to that.
Yeah, I can touch on that real quickly. Obviously, they do pay for some of our personnel costs for dispatching if they did choose to go away. As of right now, they're under contract through this budget year for us to provide services. Yes.
Then that's fine.
If that should change, we'd have to relook at the situation.
It's fine. I mean, I just wasn't sure, I just wasn't sure if they were ending.
No, it is under contract through this fiscal year.
Oh, I need, no, thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Cadella?
In Mr. Wilson's original presentation about what's new, the tracks guard, FTA booking, e-ticketing, are those, is that everything that you're attributing the additional 10% in proposed revenue on court fines, top of page 83? We're going from a projected of 500,000 to a proposed of 550,000?
I will, the tracks guard number is actually broken out separately.
Yeah, so.
About seven lines of the envelope. Yeah. The court fines, this year, looks pretty low based upon the last couple of years. Those low numbers were, I hate to say artificially inflated, but those numbers were inflated by the Thorndale Avenue Bridge being out, and we got a lot of overweight trucks going over that bridge, a lot of overweight trucks. But historically, if you go back, and I know this isn't on their side, I jotted it down for myself, in '05, it was 525,000, '06, 455, '07, 458, '08 was a down year of 420, and this year, we're projecting 500. And so it is a little bit higher than, than the standard historical number. However, I'm going to, unfortunately, I have to defer to the chief or deputy chief again on that one for the specifics of the number. But historically, that is more in line with the historical trend than the '09 and '10 numbers were.
The fact that it's 10% has me a little concerned, so I need, yeah, I just need you, Brad, and the chief to make me feel warm and fuzzy about it so I can forget it.
Just with regards to that, I know that we've been doing some audits with the clerk's office. There was a change in some legislation with regards to how the disbursements were made. That's reflective in this year. I believe that that number is going to be solid for next year based on some of the go-forward audits that are being conducted with the clerk's office, which would be coming back to us on those adjustments.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Page 83, the, for special service area, does that mean all the special service areas are paid off? If we go from, I'm reading this right, you go down to zero?
Mr. Wilson?
That particular line item was a transfer in from the special service area funds, and it was a administrative fee, if you will, to manage the construction projects out on, in the three special service areas, 12, 13, and 14, each of the industrial parks. Fortunately, all those construction projects are done, the roads are done, the lift stations are done and everything else. And in reviewing it internally and also kind of talking with our auditors, we had a real tough time justifying charging the service areas $50,000 to sign two invoices a year. And so it's effectively, the service areas are not paid off, there's still, I think, 15 years to go on them.
Okay.
But it's effectively a debt service fund now, so there's no administration of the construction projects, so we didn't feel it prudent to, to continue to charge the, the fund that fee.
Thank you.
Alderman Police?
Brad, same page, 83, towards the bottom, inter-fund transfers from the water, 688,000. What's that?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. That is, it's easiest way to explain this, basically, it's a reimbursement, on the auditing side, it's handled as a reimbursement from the water fund to the general fund. Effectively, it covers a number of things, specifically the overhead and the salaries that aren't allocated to the water fund. For example, in my department, the only person, I, the UB coordinator is the only one that's actually budgeted out of the water fund. But fiscal assistant Warren, Mr. Fashoda, myself, we spend a large amount of time dealing with water customers, dealing with water bill issues and whatever, but we're not, we don't take any money out of the water fund for that purpose. So this is a convention to reimburse the general fund for that, for, for our time, for our telephones, for the overhead, the maintenance of this building that we sit in to help affect water billing and the water fund. Up until a couple of years ago, it actually was 400,000. Then we moved, we consolidated the public works administration and the engineering functions all into the general fund. And so instead of having half out of the general fund, half out of the water fund, we budgeted all out of the general fund, and half of their budget, we increased that reimbursement by. So instead of having two budgets for two people, we just had one budget and increased the reimbursement back to the general fund. So it's a, an effort to offset the embedded costs and people doing water fund work that aren't actually budgeted or like the phone bills and stuff like that that aren't actually parsed out to the water fund through the certain departments. And in fact, primarily, that's what all those transfers are for, is, is administration fees and reimbursements from those different funds for the work we do on those particular projects throughout the year, for those different funds throughout the year.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I don't know why you went through this quite heavily, I mean, I got a lot of red marks on this one. Equipment replacement, now, we just talked about leasing equipment out of lease through an MFT fund. If we're doing that, how can we go from, and I, and I don't have the list of equipment replacements being replaced this year. We go from 184,000 up to 300,000. I know trucks went up, I understand that, but now we're going to lease equipment. I thought the whole point of having equipment, and I understand, Joe, where, where leasing deal was, was coming down years ago, but what, if we're going to do that, why would a equipment replacement fund skyrocket that much if now you're talking about leasing a piece of equipment? I mean, I know we leased a sweeper, I knew we leased a special equipment, but I just don't understand. I mean, someone's got to sell me on that one.
Yeah, that number actually, if, if not for the proposal of the capital lease, then there would actually be $450,000.
What, are you looking to do, leasing one piece of equipment?
Correct. And then the rest pay for the normal convention through, through this funding mechanism.
Are we extending, are we extending the, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, go ahead.
Are we extending the, the equipment replacement? Are we extending the equipment replacement list that we have to jump it that high? I mean, I, because it's always been that we, and I know we replace police guards at a routine basis every four years, we always approve that ahead of time. Well, whatever, it might be two this year, I, you know, we'll talk about that. But the question is, how many pieces of equipment are we looking at to buy for this kind of money? And then lease equipment.
Mr. Wilson, and I'll recognize Alderman Coles. Mr. Wilson?
Sure. In that particular number of 300,000, not counting the International, there's four other vehicles, or four other pieces of equipment, the largest of which is the trackless that they use to plow the sidewalks with. That is a price tag of proposed replacement cost of $140,000. Unit 299, which currently is a 1999 GMC, for 30,000. A 2001 for the street department of 70,000, and an administration vehicle for about $25,000. One of those vehicles actually was pushed back, I believe, from last year, because it got cut last year. But other than that, everything else is right where it's always been on the replacement schedule. And then this, the movement to the capital lease, we actually have the next five years in a row, a diesel coming due, in addition to another 100-plus-thousand-dollar piece of equipment. So this capital movement to a capital lease is going to be, probably, we're going to propose it at least for the next five years for the diesels, for the Internationals, or whoever happens to get the state bid at that time, just to accommodate for pushing through, you know, the wheel loader, the backhoe, another heavy dump, and two other heavy dump trucks, and a new sweeper in the next five years.
How long is the lease?
We can do three, four, or five years. The way that we broke out the numbers downstairs, in order to get them through and also not completely compromise the MFT fund, assuming everything else holds constant, relatively speaking, in the MFT fund, we'd be looking to do three-year leases on those trucks for the next, at least, five years of replacements. But then, sure, we're just talking about the one. But we have figured it out, and the MFT fund is not going to be compromised from a fund balance standpoint. They still have some flexibility to do things in there, so we're not completely compromising. So we're helping save the general fund $150,000 a year, and not compromising the MFT fund at the same time.
Alderman Coles?
Oh, hi.
Okay, okay. One point of clarification, the structure that you'd like to go through the budget on, for example, the admin, the general fund has several departments. Are you looking to go department by department, or general fund, random questions, then approve it, and then go on to the water fund, and, yeah?
Yeah, no, I prefer to go department by department.
Okay.
If it's random questions, we're bouncing back and forth and stuff. So actually, starting on, you know, 83, like, 82, like we did, it's a perfect place to start.
Okay, gotcha.
And then we'll get through these four pages, and then go into administration budget, vet that out, then go into the clerk's budget, vet that out, and continue through.
Fair enough. So I'm going to call on Alderman Police, and then we'll try and close out administration. Alderman Police, did you wish to be recognized?
Yes, please.
Okay, Alderman Police?
Brad, the inter-fund transfers, you said, basically cover a lot of the administrative work and whatnot. And I'm looking at this as, you said earlier, the water fund really doesn't matter here, but 688,000 is 80% of those inter-fund transfers. So if, and I've been bringing this up for a while on these water rate increases, if we don't do the increase, how are you going to get 688,000? Because you're going to short that water fund 500,000 if we don't pass the increase.
Mr. Wilson?
There's a couple of different things in that statement there. First of all, the rate increase has already been passed. It was passed two and a half years ago when you passed the four-year rate increase plan. Obviously, you have the ability to go through and...
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, and then I'm going to call on Alderman Ray Wesley. Alderman, please?
When we passed those rates, we're supposedly losing money, and our goal was to make about a million dollars. We're at 800,000 now. So why are we going to 1,808,000? That's why.
Alderman Ray Wesley?
Okay, I got a couple of questions. 82, property taxes. Brad, your proposal is 2662,526. How are you justifying that with the assess valuation of possibly going down? If I'm, you understand my, if you don't understand the question, I'll try to clarify it. Do you?
Mr. Wilson?
Um...
I don't know where you got this number, that's why.
Sure. That number, we took last year's approved levy from the county and added what CPI is, which is 2.7%. So we just added what the CPI is, because we get the lesser of 5% or CPI. So when we passed the property tax levy in December, we passed it at 4.99%. We pretty well knew that we weren't going to get, we were going to get the 2.7, which is what CPI was. We took last year's approved levy, added the 2.7% on to that, and then we booked 98% of it to allow for doubtful accounts, but that's where that number was derived from. And we don't levy a tax rate, we don't levy a mill rate, we levy an amount, which does help us in some regards against the decline in EAV. Now, all that being said, next Tuesday, the clerk's office is releasing their preliminary property tax levy numbers. So I'll be going to pick that up next Tuesday morning and have a lot clearer picture of what that number is going to be next Tuesday morning.
So that number would possibly change?
It's possible. I think in each of the last four years, it's actually gone up from what we proposed in the budget, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not married to that, but...
I'm not going to sit up here and say everyone's property taxes is coming down, but I did talk to Assessor, and there is some changes, but it doesn't mean that your taxes are going to go down. So...
Correct.
We talked about business license. How much was lost with Michael Lewis leaving?
You'd have to pull the file and get the exact number on that. I don't know what their exact business license fee was.
Did you get that to me?
Certainly.
And you have senior bus fees here? On page 82, it says zero, it was 4,000. What, you want to go and clarification what that's for?
That is, the senior bus fees is the dileride fees, the money that we collect on the dileride bus that the drivers collect every day. And for whatever reason, a couple of years ago, when we moved the salaries for the dileride bus drivers to the tourism fund, the revenue that we took in didn't follow along with it to the tourism fund. So unfortunately, the, where we were paying for them didn't match where the money coming into them was for, was going into. So we moved into the tourism fund to properly match the expense for the dileride program to the revenues for the dileride program.
So it's coming out of tourism fund?
Going into tourism fund now, correct.
On page 83, you have economic development. In 2010, you had 58, 434. Why are we going 000 for 11, projection 12, 0? It's a transfer. Where are you moving? Why, where is it?
The Economic Development Fund was actually closed in...